Good evening, welcome to the June twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen, regular city commission meeting. I ask that everyone turn off their cellphone, or put them on silent. We'll start off with the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment's silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on tonight's agenda is old business, consideration of minutes from the June twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, regular meeting. Any comments, changes, additions, deletions from the commission? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move we approve the minutes of the June twelfth, twenty eighteen, regular meeting.
My second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes of the June twelfth meeting. Begin voting through Mr. Griswold.
Aye.
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 Passes four zero. Next item, second consideration ordinance for the eighty-eighty industrial revenue bonds for Zech Ford, and this will be a roll call, but I will call the roll. But, Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, there have been no changes since first consideration ordinance on this. If you'd like any information, more information, Mr. Waters is here, can speak on industrial revenue bonds, or I can speak a little bit on the project. But otherwise, there have been no changes since first consideration. Any questions or comments from the commission?
No, I'm supportive of the ordinance when we get to that point. The only thing I would say is that on the staff policy report, I mean, I asked the question, I think at our last meeting, and I just, if possible, would like to see kind of a common purpose for the ordinance, which I think is a mechanism in which Zech Ford purchases the bonds, and is allowed the ability to use the city's taxes M status when purchasing materials for their project. So, that's the only thing that I wanted to point out. I mean, if, in terms of the policy report, if that could be inserted some, for like historical purposes, or discommunication with the citizens, I would appreciate it, but that's just kind of an administrative note.
Okay. Any other comments? I'll call the roll. Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Griswold?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Passes four zero. Next item is citizens' participation under new business. This is for where citizens can speak to the city commission, or present petitions to the city clerk. If you care to address the commission, I ask that you come up to the dius there, the lectern, give us your name and address, and speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda. There's chances to talk on agenda items later. Does anyone care to speak to the commission? Please, sir.
I don't know if they put me on the agenda or not. I called in. Mr. Raymond Martinez?
No, you're not on the agenda, sir. Your address?
Ten twenty-eight Kenton Street.
Ten twenty-eight Kenton, okay. Go ahead, sir.
I've been having some problems with my neighbor. For the past three years, I've been getting a average of two to three letters a month, about some sort of city ordinance on my property. And there's some things in my last letter that is in here that I was told was okay. I have a couple of vehicles parked in my backyard on concrete. Last year I was told they was fine. Now they're saying I have to remove them. I, my grass is tall, it's, I know I gotta mow that. But, my porch, he called about my porch. I've been trying to get somebody in there to fix my porch, but I can't, because somehow he's got ties in with contractors and stuff, that nobody wants to come and work on my house. I've been fighting-
Do you own your house, sir?
Yes. I've been fighting this man for the past three years, because he's trying to get me to move, so he can buy the property for himself. It's gone on the past three years. And every time I call on something for him, nothing's ever done. It's like, he can't be touched. And I just, I've gotten-
I don't want to interrupt you, but I don't quite understand where, what's, you say you're getting letters from the city-
I get-
For code violations?
Yes, I get-
How many have you had?
Well, you figure two a month for last year, and I've got-
Twenty of them or so?
Yeah, I've gotten probably six this year so far.
And for what type of violation?
Um, my grass gets an inch over tall, and he's calling the city. I got a car parked out there, because the windows are busted out, and I'm trying to find money to fix it. He calls the city on that. All my vehicles-
Is the car licensed?
Yes, it's licensed, tagged, insured, everything. The two vehicles in the back, they both run. One has a lien on it, so I can't do anything with it. The other one is my son. He just went off to the military. He's trying to get the title to me, so I could do something with it.
Is it tagged?
No.
That is, you know, unfortunately, that's a, you know, that's a requirement.
I was told last year that as long as they was in the back, on concrete, they were fine. That's what I was told, by code enforcement.
Did you get that in writing?
No, I didn't. The, there was, I forgot her name, and it was short, kinda heavyset way, you told me that.
So, what can we do for you, Mr. Martinez?
I just, I'm just tired of getting these letters, and then when I call on a violation for him, nothing is done.
How do you know nothing is done?
Because nothing changes in his yard. He's got a shed that's a foot close to the property line, it's too close to the property line. He's got a trailer that's been sitting out there for three years, that I know of, that never moves. He's walking his dog without a leash, but nothing can be done, because it does it after animal patrol, and code enforcement's gone home.
That, I don't think that's code enforcement issue on dogs, it's animal-
Running latches, please.
Yeah, that's, that's not a code enforcement issue. Uh, that, no, that's not, that's-
No, it's not my house.
Obviously. I'm familiar with ten twenty, I know, we're ten twenty-eight Kenton, is right off of, uh, uh, Tenth Avenue, on the, on the north side of the street there.
Yeah. And my grass, the previous owners had the yard so fertilized, my grass goes quick. And when it rains, I can't get in it for two, three days to mow it. That's just my mower, it's clogged up, bogged down, everything.
But, you do know that code states, you wouldn't get a letter until it's twelve inches.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
But I know-
So, when you're getting a letter, I, I'm not gonna ask the people in this room to take a poll, but in my opinion, twelve inches is over the limit, and heavy fertilization from two or three years ago, and two or three days of rain, doesn't take it to that level. And I think it's, it's fair for the city to-
Where it to be moved. Right, yeah, I understand that. That's, that's not a problem. And I get one day off a week. I have spinal synapsis, so there's only so much that I can do in a day. I try to get out there and do something every day, but apparently, it's, it's not enough.
How long does it take you to mow your lawn?
It takes me about four hours. Cause I don't, I don't-
How much property do you have?
I don't have a rider.
Now, how, how much property, how big is your?
I have three lots I have to mow.
Oh, okay.
And weedy. And there's some stuff around my house I have to pick up, yes, I understand that. And I've tried to contact code enforcement, and nobody wants to talk to me. I've called, I've sent an email, and the neighbor has told me he has called code enforcement.
Well, I, I will speak for code enforcement a little bit. Code enforcement's not gonna send you a letter or cite you for something that's not in violation of the code. Just because someone calls on you, that in and of itself, doesn't mean that you're in violation. But if they are alerted that something's going on, if I turn in certain properties to code enforcement, they will look at it. I don't make that decision. They come out and look at it, so that is a violation, or it's not a violation. And if it's a violation, the effective property owner receives a site, receives a letter. And if it's not abated, if the problem's not taken care of, in a particular amount of time, usually seven, seven days, I believe, then they go out and check it again. Either the city can abate it by hiring somebody to mow it, and charge you a large administrative fee, or there's some cases, go all the way to court, and then you start paying heavy fines because of court. And I don't think you've been in the court yet, have you?
Yeah, I went to court last year.
Did you, did you get fined?
Yeah. Almost three hundred dollars.
For what?
I had some stuff on my back patio, that I was in the process of cleaning up, and apparently, I didn't do it fast enough. I-
I, I don't know the details, but for it to get to the, to court, I would, I'm not gonna say it's overly egregious, but it had gone for quite a long time. I, I think that you had probably plenty of time, reasonable amount of time, to get it corrected.
Right. I had a son that had a party, and he destroyed my back patio. And, like I said, I get one day off a week, and it took me quite a while to clean it up, because he made one heck of a mess.
Sounds like it.
And I have three sons, and I can't get help from any of them to do anything I need done. So it's like, I'm stuck by myself. And I, I understand that my grass has to stay cut. I understand that. And all I'm trying to get is till the end of August, to get my yard the way you guys want it. Cleaned up, rid of all junk and everything, because that's how long it's gonna take me to get it done, my yard and my porch.
So what you asking for, an extension, at the time of the violation, or?
Yeah, and nobody else would talk to me. And that, that's all I want, cause I have no help.
Uh, what if we, Mr. Kramer, can we have staff talk with Mr. Martinez, and figure out what's going on? I, yeah, I'm not doubting what you're saying, Mr. Martinez, but I also know there's, you know, another side, I hate saying another side of the story, but I know that there's the city's side. For the most part, in code violations, we don't give extensions. You know, people say, give me another two months to mow my grass, till the first frost, and then it's, you know, twenty-four inches long, or clean up the yards. I have a suspicion, I don't know the details, that you've probably been given a lot of time, given a lot of notifications, to do it, and it must be one heck of a mess, if you, you can't get it until the end of August, which is sixty days from now.
The, the other five letters are just for grass. This one here is talking about the vehicles in the back. I had a few mowers sitting out there, and them were cleaned up. But there's, I have some wood on my porch, that I was doing a project with, that I have to get off of there. They want my porch fixed. I can't fix my porch right away, cause I can't get anybody out there to fix it.
I, I mean, you're saying, and we probably should end this fairly quickly, but you're saying your neighbor's preventing any contractor coming out and fixing his porch. I-
Correct.
That, that one I find very hard to believe. I could call three or four people right now, and say, I know a guy that's got, wants his porch fixed, and I'm sure they'd come out and give you an estimate. I, I don't think there's anybody in town that controls every contractor that can do that type of work, say, don't work on this house. I, I think maybe one guy you know, might know the neighbor, but I, I don't, I don't believe that to be true. That you can't find anybody-
I've had six contractors out there, they came out there, give me an estimate, I call them back, we can't do it.
Why?
They tell me why. The neighbor told me why, so that's where I stand.
Okay. Can someone talk to Mr. Martinez, in your office, or?
Mr. Martinez has been up to our office within the last week or two, to talk to staff. Typically, when someone requests an extension, we'll work with people. If it's something like removing junk and debris, we'll give them a couple of weeks or so. If it's something more structural, with fixing a deck, or a porch, you know, we realize that costs more money, and, and can take more time, so we'll, we'll, you know, give a longer extension. It, it kind of varies case by case. But yeah, we absolutely give people extensions. I, I wasn't part of the conversation that he had with our code enforcement officer, although he has been up recently. But yeah, when it's just removing junk and debris, we don't give two-month extensions on, on things like that.
Mr. Martinez, can you come in and talk with Ms. Hurley, in her, her office?
When, when I came in last time, I thought I was to talk to Chris Mills, the one who sent me the letter. I couldn't get hold of him, we went and signed back. So, yes, I'll come talk to her, it's not a problem.
Okay, yeah. She'll make a time, you know, call, and maybe make sure both of you are available, so it's not a waste of trip for either of you.
Okay. And what is your name, ma'am?
Julie Hurley.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Anyone else care to speak? Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Charles C. Filbert, two oh five Topeka Avenue. I spoke with you guys on the fifth of June, about the mosquito abatement program, and I just wanted to address some more concerns here. I have some study information, cause now I've already lost my spot here. A study from nineteen ninety-five, from the Cornell University, shows that ninety-nine point nine percent of the pesticides sprayed by adult side spraying does not actually reach the target species. You know, so all of that just goes off into the environment, and doesn't even affect the mosquitoes. According to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, spraying for adult mosquitoes, pesticides intended to kill adult mosquitoes are usually the least effective form of mosquito control. And I would like to read a little bit from a study from the University of Florida. The study's titled "Use of Butterflies as Non-Target Insect Test Species and the Acute Toxicity and Hazards of Mosquito Control Insecticides", in thorax and wing-only applications of each pest insecticide, which there were three that were used to, in this study, one of which was permethrin. Based on the LD fifty, which LD fifty stands for lethal dose of fifty percent. So it's the lethal dose that fifty percent of the specimens die, or deceased. The wing and thorax application exposures were acutely toxic to both caterpillars and adult butterflies. Permethrin was the most acutely toxic insecticide in the, insecticide in the study, after thorax exposure to fifth instar and adult butterflies, which a fifth instar is the last stage of a caterpillar's life, before it actually turns into a chrysalis, and goes on to its next phase of life. In comparison of the LD fifties of the butterflies, on microgram per, per organism, and microgram per gram basis, indicates that several butterfly species are more sensitive to these insecticides than honeybees are. And honeybees are the ones that are on the label that says, this stuff is extremely toxic to honeybees. So right here in this study, it's saying that this stuff is more toxic to honeybees, and that they should be on the label listed. Another concern of mine is, you know, on June eleventh, I was told that the city actually sprayed in zones one and two, which is everything north of Shawnee. But are we actually letting people know, hey, we sprayed this today, we are going to spray this in this area tomorrow, and on Wednesday, this is the area we're gonna spray? Can the city not make a Facebook post, or in the newspaper, that says, it's gonna rain this week, so we're not gonna spray this week, we'll resume spraying on this day? Which I'm told that we're gonna resume spraying on July second, and we'll spray the second and third, they will not spray the fourth, because of the holiday. So my question is, are they gonna spray Friday the sixth, to make up for that? Because that wasn't in the original schedule. The original schedule was for next week, starting on the second, going to the fifth. So, you know, I think that those are zones seven and eight, maybe, that get sprayed last, which is further south in the city. So I would just like to see the city, you know, that's one thing that you guys can do now, is make the people more aware that, hey, we're spraying this on this day, even though we said that this is the schedule, we're definitely gonna spray it on these days. So those are my concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Filbert. Mr. Kramer, we, it is on the website, on spray schedule, is it not, or?
It, it, the spray schedule is. I don't know if we give a daily update on the Facebook. I mean, it's something we can do, it's just, you know, adapting. We, sometimes we do it with snowplows or leaf programs, or something like that. We could, we could put that information out.
It would be good to put it in the newspaper, I would think, too, cause some people don't wanna be sprayed.
Not time to get it in the newspaper. You don't need your newspaper till five o'clock in the afternoon.
Yeah, but it's, we know it's gonna be July second, we've got time, you know. I mean, no next one's not gonna be July, until July second. Thank you.
We were gonna take-
Thank you, very much.
Mr. Mayor, we were gonna take, get a memo at some point, I think, from the city manager on this, and then depending on the information in the memo, we were gonna make a decision about a study session. So is that still how we're proceeding?
That's still going on. I know I talked to Mr. Kramer, Mr. Commissioner Wilson, and I talked with them earlier this week about it, and they're still getting memo and all the information, they're-
Yeah, we spoke to the department, I spoke to the Department of Agriculture today. They gave me a name with the Kansas City Extension Office, so we have a draft of the memo, but we're just trying to cover all of our bases.
Yeah. It's, it's an issue that there's passion on, probably both sides. And, and there are facts on both sides.
And I've read some of the studies, too, and, and I'd just like to know if there is any options that don't affect anything but mosquitoes. I mean, we, that's what we wanna get rid of, but we don't wanna get rid of everything else.
There's, yeah.
Or damage to the environment.
Let's see what your memo comes up with, and, you know, obviously, there's pluses and minuses on both sides. Anyone else care to speak? If not, close that part of the business. We'll go into a public hearing for unsafe or dangerous structures. First action, I guess we need to open, or do you wanna preface it, Mr. Kramer?
I don't, you can go ahead and open the public.
Okay, we need to, need a motion to open a public hearing to consider dangerous structures.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to open a public hearing for dangerous structures. Begin voting through Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
We're in a public session, a public hearing for dangerous structures. Mr. Kramer, Ms. Hurley?
Hey, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this is part of a program that the city undertakes once or twice a year, to identify dangerous structures that are vacant. We don't do anything with anything that's inhabited. We try to do that through the code enforcement process, or whatever processes we have. So we've collected a number of those, and our city planner's gonna go through them, and tell you a little bit about each property.
Yep. These are, again, structures that we've evaluated based on Kansas statutes, to be considered a blighting influence on the neighborhood and the city. So there's a number of criteria that we evaluate those on. That's all listed out in your report. So we've got thirteen on the list, for each to consider. The owners were first sent notification that they were being considered for a potential demolition on March twenty-ninth. They were requested to contact staff by April twenty-seventh, to discuss possible, or to discuss the steps that were needed to bring them into code compliance. Any owners that did contact staff by that time, were given the opportunity to sign a remediation agreement, which is basically a listing of the items that would need to be completed, in order to bring it into compliance. We're really just focusing on exterior property maintenance, we don't look at interior, what's going on inside the building. So any owners that contacted staff after April twenty-seventh, they were still given a copy of that remediation agreement, but were not asked to sign it. The reason we did that was, we just wanted to make sure anybody who signed it, everybody was given the same amount of time, if they were signing that. Everybody who did ask for it was at least given a copy, so that they were aware of what we did expect. So, the commission did pass a resolution setting this public hearing back on May eighth. After that time, notification was provided to the owners, as is required by statute, via certified mail, physical posting on the structure, and publication in eleven more times. So again, we've got thirteen to go through. I'll go through each one by one, and I believe what's typically worked best, is as we go through them, for y'all to discuss, and consider them each individually that way.
Julie, do you wanna touch on the three that are on this list?
Yeah, we did have three that you had looked at, back at your previous meeting, that are not brought forward on this list. One of those was demolished by the owner, and two of them, the owners signed a voluntary remediation agreement, basically giving the city, asking us to demolish it for them. So we've gone ahead and got that contract out, and ready to go on those two properties. And what that does is save us some time and expense, in not having to go through the hoops that we have to go through using federal money. We were able to use a, a separate blight fund, to go ahead and get those done.
Can you give us the address of those three properties, or do you have a-
I didn't put them on this report, but I can certainly send it to you tomorrow, just so you can kinda review.
Can you just break those down in the next?
Yeah, the contract has been awarded. The demolition contractor had planned to start this week, but had some delays, but yeah, here pretty soon, within the next week or two.
Okay, thank you.
Do we, do we assess that, the cost on the, on the owner's property?
Yes, even if it's a voluntary demolition, they're, they're fully aware that it's assessed against their property, and the agreement that they sign, it's a, it's a legal agreement, and that has an estimated cost, and they're as close as we can figure, so that they're pretty aware upfront of what that's gonna be.
Sure, thank you.
The first one that we've got currently is six seventeen Middle Street. This one was found to have the items of dilapidation, dead and dying trees, and walls, and siding of a poor quality. On this one, we've had no contact from the owner, in regards to any intent to work on this property.
Hasn't had water for six years?
That's correct. Oh, and I, I will also note, the last time we discussed these, I know the commission had requested to see the amount of taxes that are due on all of these properties. We've made multiple requests to the county to get those dollar amounts, and have received no response. So unfortunately, we don't have that for you. We'll keep trying to work on that, but we've just not been able to get that from them.
So this house basically has been abandoned for at least-
Yes, yes.
More than six years.
Correct.
Okay.
My bet is they've paid taxes for six years, too.
Probably pretty-
I'm not a betting man, but I will just say that.
Pretty good bet.
We wanna keep this one on the list, right?
No, I want it down.
Right, right, right.
Yeah. Yes, you're right. I, I know what you're saying. Go ahead, Ms. Hurley, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, again, I don't know if the owner's here, if, I don't know if you wanted to call.
Anybody here speak to six seventeen Middle?
Abby, don't be afraid to come up and speak, just cause we have a little conversation going on about it.
Okay, thank you. Next one?
Okay, the next one is one eight, or eleven eighteen Kenton. This one, again, it's a single-story family home with a detached garage. We've had no contact from the owner. This, again, is dilapidation and disrepair, dead and dying trees, and the walls and siding in poor quality. And this one's had no water service since two thousand and thirteen, and the city has been maintaining this lawn.
Anybody here to speak to eleven eighteen Kenton?
Yeah, the next one is-
Yeah, Ms. Hurley, do you wanna give our thoughts on each house?
Yeah, I think if, if, as each one, if there's a consensus of what you wanted to-
Okay, let's go back to six seventeen, uh, uh, Middle. Is there a consensus to keep that on the demo list, or move for as expeditiously as possible to demo this property?
Yes. Both.
On, on eleven eighteen Kenton.
So there's a consensus to move forward with demolition process?
Yeah.
I thought we were going to Middle.
All do, six seventeen Middle and eleven eighteen Kenton.
Okay.
Second one.
Move as quickly as possible to get these things rolling. Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, next one is seven eighty-four Miami. This is just a detached garage slash shed only, not the house. Again, on this one, dilapidation, disrepair, uncleanliness, and the walls and siding in poor repair, and we've had no contact from the owner on this one.
Is the house abandoned, too, that goes with this, or?
Uh, no, so we do have, there is currently water service at the structure, and we generally use that as a, an indication of their, of it being occupied. So we're not aware of it being vacant.
But they have been, received certified letters?
Yes, they, yes, they sent them.
And possibly the residents there are not the owners? I mean, that-
Uh, that could be the case, yes.
Yeah, cause you'd send the letters to the regi-
We send the, the letters to the owner of record, and the property itself.
Okay, okay. Consensus on seven eighty-four Miami?
Same as the first, same as the, keep it on the list and proceed.
And that's just the shed?
Just the shed, the out, outbuilding, up against the alley there. Better get to that one quick, it may fall down before you can get to it.
Next one is six twenty-five Oak. We've had no contact from the owner on this one. There's been no water service since July of two thousand and sixteen, and the city has been maintaining the lawn. This one, I believe, it was a- Um, this one, I believe it was a fire, so there was a fire here. So, again, that, um, the damage from the fire has not been repaired, um, dead and dying trees, um, the dilapidation, disrepair on that one, and again, no contact from the owner.
Consensus to keep this one rolling?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's, um, a shed with it.
There's a wing.
That will be removed.
It's a wing, too.
I'm not sure what it was, but that will be removed as well. Uh, the next one is three twenty-five Potawatomi, uh, this one was also a fire structure. Um, the fire was just last fall, there's been no water service since September, I believe that's when the fire was. The owner had indicated that he might want to repair it, he did come in and meet with staff a week or so ago. Um, and he'd kind of worked through his insurance and, uh, decided not to repair it. So, uh, he was fine with us moving ahead with the demolition on this one and he's.
Are we in agreement with the homeowner?
Yes, yes.
Right.
Okay, the next one is two oh two Potawatomi Street, uh, the owner has indicated an intent to repair this one. Uh, no permits have been issued yet, this one is, uh, also registered on the Kansas State Register of Historic Places. Um, so that requires the Leavenworth Preservation Commission to review any possible demolition on this one, and they are scheduled to review that on, uh, July eleventh at their meeting. The owner is here tonight on this one, there had been a fire at this structure, um, I believe at the end of two thousand fifteen. But again, we haven't had any permits pulled on this one, but the owner is here to discuss.
Uh, Mr. Giles, Ricky Giles, would you like to come up and speak?
Yes.
I think we know your dad.
Oh, yeah.
I think Commissioner Bowder and I went to high school with your dad.
We did.
No, um, I started this project like around twenty fifteen, it became my property, um, twenty seventeen. I had some people work on me with the house, uh, um, making this historical, Miss Candy Ruff, who's no longer here, she helped me with the paperwork. And Mr. Bill Geiger, Ben Strumel, only wrote me a letter for, of support. Now, um, um, with this house, um, the bones are good, everything's good, most of the, the stuff is cosmetic. Like, with that fire, it took maybe a five percent of the house, you know, now, but, um, if you notice, I have opened up the porch already, I did a lot of work on, on the, on the house because the Historical Society wanted to see the windows. And they want to see the lap siding, so I took that as best as siding off. And I, and I'm just trying to bring it back like it originally was, that's why I needed that help from Miss, um, Miss Ruff, because she's a his- historian and she told me how, exactly how I wanted it to be. And dealing with this house, um, you gotta have the right people. And then what first her advice was is get it in my name, so it took me a while to get it from my father in my name, so I got it in my name. And so since February seventeenth, um, so February fourth, twenty seventeen, that's when it was deemed historical. And they walked through it, um, after the fire, where you barely could walk through the house, and they said historical. The city just looked at it, and I guess the little veranda in the north side back wall, which is not even, uh, five feet both ways, and it needs some, a couple boards, but not that much. So I got estimates already on fix this and, and prior to this, I was working on the sidewalks. When the fire happened, I went to work on the house, but they said to work on the sidewalk. I thought the fi- the house had more, uh, meaning to work on it, so I did the sidewalk. And unfortunately, I got in a car accident and it stopped my progress, so, um.
Did you have insurance on, Mr. Giles?
No, I didn't, because, uh, the fire was in twenty fifteen, it wasn't in my hands till twenty seventeen.
Okay.
Yeah, and, um, so therefore.
Well, I guess you're here, you know, our decision is, do we continue with the demolition process? Do we give you an extension or do we remove it?
To me, it looks like they've got to be reviewed by the Leavenworth Preservation Commission first before we do anything.
Yeah, but, but, you know, we can still keep it on the list.
I don't, I don't.
Yeah.
And one of my, number one thing I was trying to get, there's no homes in Leavenworth that, uh, that represents black history. This is one that I'm trying to do and put it on this, uh, the corner and, and work on it. Like I said, I got somebody that'll work on it. And recently, um, an inspector from, I guess, Yaw City told him it's going to be the mileage, so don't work on it, so I had to call the city. And I tried to find out what inspector told him this, and no one said, could come up with it. But I do have somebody that could fix it, uh, I got a couple people, but I've been working on the inside.
How much time do you need? What do you think you do? When can you, when can you get this thing cleaned up so that it's not an issue?
Can I say one more thing?
Sure, sure.
Now, when that fire happened, it was all me cleaning it up. When it was sidewalks, all me, you got thirty, thirty-man crew and fifty-man crew to work on it, but this is just me and I got one day off, so. But I found a contractor, so, uh, I can say, what was hard is the Historical Society, I just can't replace the windows, I just can't replace the door, I just can't. So I gotta go through them for.
But they have nothing to do with that siding issue and, and I get, have pictures of the back of the house and you have that, Ms. Hurley? That's got to do with the Historical Society there.
What you, what you mean by that?
Well, were the sightings missing and things like that?
Um, it kind of does, because they kind of want the lap siding back or whatnot, and that veranda right there was added on, so I could take that off. So they really, so I'm, I'm trying to do this, if I can come up here.
If you could take, grab that microphone, Mr. Giles, just so we can get you for the recording, thanks.
I'm trying to bring this out twelve feet. And if you can see, there's a door right here.
Yeah.
So this could.
Come up and out.
So that's what I'm pretty much working on. And like I said, with the Historical Society, I had to write, uh, like a thirty-eight, thirty-eight, forty-page paper. And I think this is the only house, I don't know about the houses in Leavenworth, that I got the abstract from eighteen sixty, which explains the sidewalk, the house, when it was just a land, the purchase from the Cherokee Indians, and pretty much all that, so. I've been doing a lot of work on this house and, um, I had it nominated, uh, February, but in November, it didn't get the grant money. So I have a little money aside, but, um, I was hoping that, uh, they would give me a little bit of grant money to speed up the process. Maybe next time I show up for the meeting.
You're here telling us, you're working on this, you're going to work on it.
Yeah, and.
And I know the Preservation Committee, we, we cannot, as you've been told, we cannot demolish this without at least getting Preservation Committee, uh, Commission involved.
Yes, sir.
And we wouldn't do that, but we still have the authority to keep it on the demo list, uh, to ensure that some work gets done. Meaning, you know, the house is basically on probation, but if we see work being done, we will take it off the list. My feeling is that we keep it on the demolition list, but we're not, but not to move forward demoing it right now. Give you, uh, maybe re- revisit this in sixty or ninety days, depending on what the commission says. And by that time, Preservation Commission is mad and possibly you have a better plan in place or maybe even some more action done on this house that we see some, something's been done.
Yes, and like I said, I know this is like an eyesore, but, uh, because of that fire and still to this day, the fire is unexplained. If you notice, there's a couple fires down in Potawatomi that's been unexplained, but this one was unexplained by the fire department. It was almost finished, I was just putting drywall up in the kitchen, then the fire started, so, yeah. But, um, anyway, like I said, I've been working on this for a while, I know my grandma started like in nineteen eighty and with all that. So, uh, going through her, uh, paperwork, you know, I found it and I'm just trying to do what she tried to do. And, and she bought all four lots, so there's four lots, not just that house, so I understand what she was trying to do, so. My vision of this house is, you know, it's like four lots, put a big privacy fence around it, um, dress it up. I may have to take it off the historic list if they're not going to help, you know, so, um, that's where my goal, so. I had a, I had a bid, which was reasonable, and he said he could do it like in four weeks, but I wanted like, uh, at least three, so. If sixty to ninety days would be all right, it'd be, uh, that, that'd help me out, and I could clean some of that up, up, too. But again, like I said, August twelfth, last, uh, seventeen, I was in like an accident. I'm like eighty-five percent now, but before that, I did the front porch, I got the electric updated, the cellar, I got new stairs and all that. So I was doing, making progress until the accident, so.
I agree with what you want to do, Mr. Mayor.
How do you spell your name?
R. C. K. E. Y. G. I. L. E. S. Junior.
Ricky Giles Junior.
My thought is, let's extend this for ninety days and allow Mr. Giles to work on it some more, hopefully he can work with Preservation Commission, maybe get some grants. But, uh, as you can see, he has, has done some work, uh, he's here fighting for his property, which we haven't seen on the five preceding properties, uh, I feel that we should extend him ninety days.
I agree.
I agree.
Mr. Giles, you got another ninety days, we'll revisit this in another ninety days, uh, hopefully you show us some more progress. I, it's our hope that this gets taken off the demolition list and that you put a decent property back on the market, or back in town. And I know that's your hope, too, and, uh, we wish you all the luck, in any way that we can help you, uh, please let us know.
And that's another thing, too, if I can approach you real quick and show yourself something else, just real quick, the sidewalks. Now, we're talking about preservation.
Put in a new brick sidewalk, thank you.
And this is what it looked like before, and that's why I'm so upset. It goes straight to the street, you don't really need a wheelchair van, right?
Yeah.
Right.
And, um, the back of it, by then it went straight to the street, you didn't need a wheelchair van, so you didn't have to drive a diesel to the way. Now you rather than get a car to the way, and this is what it looks now.
I'm sorry?
That's what it looked like now, after. And.
Good.
Before.
Good.
Yeah.
We're trying to preserve it, I'm like.
No, no, I understand, no, you're doing, you're doing good work and it, it.
The sidewalks.
Yeah.
Before. And. After.
You're about four or five inches taller than your dad, aren't you?
Yeah, more than that.
I don't, I don't know if I agree with that, I know you're taller. Okay, thank you, Mr. Giles.
Thank you, Mr. Giles.
Mayor, could I suggest that, um, instead, just a ninety days that we can put on there, that it'll be reviewed at the October ninth City Commission meeting?
Sure.
That gives him a little bit more than ninety days, but we know exactly what meeting he'll be on.
Did you hear that, Mr. Giles, we're going to review your property October ninth, which is a bit more than ninety days from now. Okay, uh, next property, Ms. Hurley.
Okay, the next one is two oh nine Elm Street. Um, this one, the owner had previously indicated to staff a possible intent to repair this one. Uh, there's been no water service since, uh, February of two thousand fifteen, the neighbors had complained of squatters in this property. Um, again, on this one, there's dilapidation and disrepair, um, walls, siding and the roof, um, in need of repair. Um, I'm not sure if the owner's here, but again, they had previously indicated to staff possible intent to repair. Somebody's here, yes. Good evening.
Yes, ma'am.
I think I ought to apologize for taking up your time, number one. I'm Sandra Poston and I represent Platinum Enterprises. And we purchased this property at foreclosure sale and.
For a what sale?
A foreclosure sale.
You purchased at a foreclosure?
Yes.
Yes.
And we registered the deed in January of eighteen. And the, uh, address got listed for Platinum as that house address. So I, it came across my, uh, attention that the address was wrong, so I corrected it in April. And at that time, I guess you guys had already looked at the property, put it on a list, and I was unaware of it. And so Lee sent me a, uh, a letter from, with a new address and it had to do with the nuisance of weeds and et cetera, but you, if you remember right, April was really rainy and cold. And so I got the letter May seventh and I was here in Leavenworth, meeting with her on May the fourteenth. And it was already on the list, so her, she, whoever she conferred with told, told her to tell me to come tonight. So I guess I need your help and guidance, our intentions.
Where's Platinum Enterprises located, where are you from?
Wichita, Kansas.
Okay, so you purchased this at a foreclosure sale sight unseen, or you come up and look at it?
I, I was sight unseen.
Okay, what are your plans with it?
We, our plans were to fix it up and.
If we give you some time, how much time do you need to fix it up?
You know, I, it's whatever, whatever your guys' rules are, our intentions, we, we should have been into it already. But because of it being on a list, I just had to show up tonight and ask if it could be removed so we could invest, make an investment in it.
The longest we, uh.
I don't know what else to.
Ever extend is ninety days, if we give you ninety days, and it's actually going to be a hundred and ten days, probably, October ninth, whatever, October ninth comes out to be, probably a hundred and five days, whatever, uh, would you consider that fair?
Oh, definitely, definitely, and we, and we have, the, um, the mowing is being taken care of by a, a young man that lives next door to it, I understand.
There haven't been any code violations, no mowing violations?
No, nonsense, uh, league on contact with her, yep.
Uh, any comments from the commission?
No, it sounds good.
I'll be in favor of that extension.
Uh, Ms. Poston, we'll extend you, uh, till October ninth, uh, that's next time it'll be reviewed. And hopefully the recommendation from, uh, city planner on October ninth is this property's no longer an issue and.
That's right.
You don't need to be here, but you're welcome to come to Leavenworth and Wichita anytime, spend the night in one of our fine hotels and buy dinner.
I have a meeting in the mornings, I'm driving back now.
Okay.
Do I need to stay around?
If you'd look, sure, sure.
Thank you guys very much.
Watch how we work.
And I do apologize that I even had to take up your time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Poston.
Have a good evening.
Thank you for being here. Next property, Ms. Hurley?
Okay. Next property is fourteen ten Central Avenue. This is a single-story, or, uh, single-story, single-family house. Um, previously, a tree had fallen on the back of the house, um, that has been removed. This has come under new ownership, I believe the current owner inherited it, inherited it possibly, and he is here tonight to speak about it, and he is intending to, um, repair it and get this brought back up to come.
Are you Mr. Karens?
I'm Michael Karens.
Okay, it says Robert Karens is the owner, but I'm sure that's family?
Uh, Robert was my father.
Okay, so you're the current owner?
So I'm the son.
But are you the current owner of the property?
Uh, I'm the sole heir.
Okay.
So, uh, far as I know, I do, uh, but the record name is still Robert. He owned it with his wife, my mother, Wilma. And, uh, he died, uh, several years ago. So, um, as you can see, it's a fairly sturdy little house, there's a tree in the back, uh, a fairly large tree that fell over earlier, you know, see that? And, uh, so I had that removed, that was in March, I believe. The house is, uh, fully furnished and operational, but it's unoccupied and has been since my dad died.
How long was that, Ken?
Three years.
Three years, three years?
Did you say your father passed away three years ago?
My father died several years ago.
Okay.
Uh-huh, my mother died about twenty years ago. So, um, I think, uh, you know, as far as the house goes, uh, the main problem has been, uh, with the yard care. There's hedges on either, uh, perimeter, either side of the house. As you can see, there's also hedges around the foundation of the house, but the ones on the sides, uh, have become overgrown. And, uh, I've been working the last three or four weeks to cut those down. But the house itself is in pretty good repair. Uh, it has all-weather siding, sturdily built, secure, uh, no windows broken, uh, roof's in fairly decent shape.
I think the, uh, report says it needs a replacement, is it not, Ms. Hurley?
Yeah, and I think that had probably been put down, um, we were probably under the assumption that the tree had destroyed that roof when it fell on it, it was impossible to tell what the state is, usually when a tree falls on a roof, it's, uh, done quite a bit of damage. So it looks like it didn't, so it, it does look, now that we can actually see the roof, it looks like the roof is, um, yeah, thoroughly in, in good shape there, so.
So, Ms. Hurley, in your, uh, you had looked at this right now, what needs to be done to take this off the list? Obviously, the tree's been removed, has it not?
Yeah, the tree's been removed, um, now that we've got a full picture of the roof, that I don't think the roof needs to be repaired. There's maybe a little bit of painting that needs to be done upon that.
Well, the porch could use it.
But I don't think it's anything that would really constitute demolition on this, at this point.
I heard the city planner there, Mr. Karens, that, uh, the assumption was when that tree was laying on the roof, how long was it laying on the roof?
Uh, I, I think it had been quite a while.
Where do you live, Mr. Karens? Where do you live?
I live about an hour south in Kansas City.
So no one's taking care of this property while you're gone, and we've been mowing your lawn for you.
That's correct.
And you know how much we charge to mow your lawn?
Well, I don't care.
Yes, you do, because if I mow it one time, I charge you thirty-five dollars plus a hundred dollars. I mow it two times, I charge you thirty-five dollars plus two hundred and fifty dollars.
I understand.
I mow it three, four, or five times, it's thirty-five dollars plus five hundred dollars. You could be looking at three to four thousand dollars worth of mowing charges.
I understand.
So, you do care that we mow your lawn.
I understand.
So, I understand.
How long has it been vacant, and what are your plans for it?
Well, first have to, it, it, my own thought is, this is my childhood home. Both my brother and, and I grew up here. It was the marital home for both my mother and father for their entire fifty-plus years of marriage. It's the last outpost of my family, my immediate family, in Leavenworth. We've been in Leavenworth for over a hundred years. So, it's difficult for me to deal with it as far as selling it or even renting it. But I have been in contact with a realtor. Her name's Lois Mainz. She's with Reese Nichols. And she's, she's pushing me to, you know, list it and sell it. And I believe that's what I'm gonna do, and what I have to do. I'm attached to this place and I'm attached to the neighborhood, but that's all in my memory. It's in nobody else's memory.
But your neighbors are probably not attached to it when the weeds are growing real high and there's a tree laying on the house for a long period of time.
Well, sure, it doesn't help the neighborhood either.
So, think of your neighbors that way, too, that.
It doesn't help the neighborhood. It's an older neighborhood.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, it, it actually doesn't look too bad, but you can tell the houses that have been cared for and those that are not.
Right.
And so, it's not helping the neighborhood. It's not helping the city. The city needs to look for, you know, the future, and today, my connection is with the past. And I'm the only one in this world who has that same connection to this particular property. And this recent episode with the tree, as well as what we're dealing with tonight, has convinced me that I need to let that go.
Ms. Hurley, do you know right off the top of your head, or do you have information, how much in mowing charges Mr. Karens looking at?
I don't have that in front of me, but we could easily find that and get that to him tomorrow.
But we're talking probably a substantial amount, because we've done a lot of mowing.
It, it could be if we've been mowing for several years.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause it, it's been vacant at least for seven years, 'cause it hasn't had water for seven years. It's probably been vacant for seven years, because it hasn't had water for seven years.
That's correct.
So, may have been vacant even longer than that.
No, that's about right.
Okay, well, it possibly is at the point right now that we don't put it on the demolition list in its present condition, based on what the city planner is telling us. My personal advice would be, you should maybe find a kid or hire a garden, a lawn mowing service that would charge you thirty-five dollars to mow this, rather than five hundred and thirty-five dollars that we're charging you. Because we're not in the lawn mowing business, but if you're gonna put us in the lawn mowing business, we make money at it. We make good money.
Well, I understand that, sir, and I've been.
So, if we take this off, the demo list, if it doesn't meet demo qualifications, it's up to you, how you handle it. But if it gets dilapidated more sometime in the future, we could put it back on. And I'm not an attorney, but if your family's, if you're the only heir and your father's been away, it sounds like at least seven years, this has been through probate, if you haven't sought some legal counsel, you probably need to get this into your name somehow. I can't give any counsel on that, but.
I understand.
Yeah, because you're not gonna be able to sell it unless, well, you can figure that out.
Well, you know, it would be saleable, but it needs a little cosmetic work to really get, you know, a decent price. But as I say, that's not really my main interest, but it is now.
Okay.
Because I need to do something with it. It's not helping anybody.
Right, not helping the neighborhood or anything else, right. Uh, what does the commission think about fourteen ten Central?
I'd just like to hear Ms. Hurley's recommendation in terms of, should we, should, is this a property we should take off the demolition list?
I would recommend taking it off. I don't think that the state that it's in now with the tree removed and being able to see that the roof is intact, that it meets the criteria for demolition.
Okay.
I, if I could, I, I would, I would support that. I would support that move. I mean, it's not gonna be helpful to, to, to have that entry.
Well, if we remove it from the demo list, we're not gonna knock on your door anymore.
Except for code, it's code issues.
But we will hit you for code violations, but nothing to do with demolition. Is there a consensus among the commission to remove this from the demo list?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Karens, your lucky day. This, your house is now off the demo list and free to do with it as you wish. Work with your realtor, hope that it doesn't fall into disrepair, that gets back on the demo list. Right now, it's your house, and we're not doing anything with it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Karens.
I will just note, the city clerk was able to look up while we were talking, there's about twenty-one hundred dollars in mowing assessments on this property.
Did you hear that, Mr. Karens? Right now, you have twenty-one hundred dollars worth of mowing charges that we have done for you.
Okay, that's fine.
Are you looking to adopt anybody or?
It's not funny to me.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Karens.
Looks like the.
This house is priceless.
Okay, I understand.
Looks like the twenty-one hundred was just the two thousand seventeen mowing, and previously, there was about thirteen hundred.
So, you're thirty-four, thirty-five hundred dollars in total?
Yeah.
And are we still mowing it?
No.
Uh, yeah, I don't, I don't believe we've got.
You've got someone taking care of that, Ms. Karens? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Karens.
I've been working on it for the last three or four weeks.
Good, good. Thank you, Ms. Karens. Uh, next property.
Okay, the next one is fifteen seventeen Ninth Avenue. We've had no contact from the owner on this one. The last water service was, or March of two thousand sixteen. On this one, the tree, a tree from a neighboring property fell onto this house here within the last couple of months. The neighboring property owner had the tree, the portion of the tree on their own property removed, but for liability reasons could not go onto this property and remove it. So, there is still, as you can see, that tree, or portion of a tree on the roof of this house. And again, we have not had any contact from this property owner.
Hasn't had water service for over two years.
Correct.
Anybody here to speak to fifteen seventeen Ninth Avenue? If not, is there consensus to keep, move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, move it forward, restart the, what is it, motion to demo this house? Okay, next one.
Okay, the next one is fifteen twenty-nine Tenth Avenue. This property was previously damaged by fire. The last state of water service was July of two thousand seventeen, and looks like we have had no contact from this property owner. It is boarded up, but we haven't had any contact from the property owner.
Okay, leave it on there.
Leave it on there and proceed forward as we've talked about.
Anybody here to speak to that property, fifteen twenty-nine Tenth Avenue? Just south of the little bar. Okay, and did we, we did have a consensus to keep this on, okay?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is seventeen twenty-eight South Fourth Street. This property has been acquired by a new property owner since the commission first took a look at this. The, the new property owner, he, he did submit a letter in writing that you've got in your packet. He wasn't able to be here tonight. He had a previously planned family vacation, but he is in the process of rehabbing this property. He's made a, a fair amount of progress on it, and he is, I believe he outlined what he's still continuing to do. He anticipates having everything done by the first of August to complete the repairs on this. But again, he has, he has been working on it so far.
Uh, so if we'd give him sixty days to the first regular meeting in August, Ms. Williamson, what day would that be?
That would be August fourteenth.
August fourteenth?
Again, on August fourteenth.
Uh, and Ms. Hurley, he, he's saying there'll be plenty of time.
He said he could have, in his letter, he said he could have everything done by August first, so I would think that that should be plenty of time.
Do you recommend we go ahead and take it off the list, then?
I would keep it on to be updated in August, since it does still need some work, just so we can kind of monitor that. And if he's made satisfactory progress at that point, then we can take it off then.
Right.
Do we have a consensus to continue this one till August fourteenth?
Yes.
Okay. Next one, Ms. Hurley.
The next one is four oh seven North Tenth. This one has actually been purchased by the same gentleman. Again, he purchased it and was unaware that it was on the demolition list. We'd already kind of started the process. Again, he has started working on this one, putting up new siding, working on the roof. And again, on this one, he did state that he should be able to have it, everything completed by August first.
This is the one I know. There's been a lot of complaints from neighbors on vermin and things like that in the area.
Yeah, I believe so.
And this is four oh seven North Tenth?
Four oh seven North Tenth.
Is there a consensus to extend this one till August fourteenth? Review it again on August fourteenth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay, and our final one is ten thirty Iron Molders. The property owner actually did sign a remediation agreement on this one. The deadline on that was June twenty-second. They have been working on it. I believe they've run into some delays, and it's not quite finished, but they've made pretty significant progress. I'm not sure if they're here tonight, but.
Mr. Wagner, is there a Mr. Wagner here, owner of ten thirty Iron Molders? So, they did, they, I see they signed one on April thirtieth.
They did sign their remediation agreement, and they're in the process of working on it. You can tell, I mean, there's, the windows are new. A lot of the siding's been replaced. There's new electrical service. The roof is new, so they have been putting quite a bit into this property.
How much, any communication from him? Does he say he can finish this?
I, I'm not aware that they, he's had any communication with our code enforcement staff, so on this one, I would probably recommend giving, until that August fourteenth meeting, when we're gonna review the previous two, give us a chance to see if we can get in touch with the owner and kind of nail them down on when they could have this done.
Quick question, you say date of last water service, June of two thousand fourteen, so it's in four years uninhabited, but then it says maintained lawn. Does that mean we maintained it, or he maintained?
Uh, looks like that we have modus. I, we're not currently maintaining it, but it looks like we have, yeah, in the past.
Ms. Hurley, Ms. Williamson, let's say that we had been mowing this lawn for the last four years, and there's, call it thirty-five hundred dollars in mowing charges. We can't, if someone comes in and says, I wanna write a check for that, that's, it's too late, because there, it's put on a tax lien, is it not?
If it's already been sent over to the, to the county and put on the taxes, they'll have to pay that to the county. If there's a portion of it that hasn't been sent over to be applied to the taxes or assessed to the taxes, we can still take that portion here. So, it, it could be a combination. They could pay us, and they could pay the county, so.
Do we have any idea on how much this property owes in mowing?
I don't. I can kind of do a quick look just of the last year and see what's on there. If you guys want to give me just a second, I can look that up. Talk amongst yourselves. There was only one hundred and fifty dollars and ninety cents assessed to the twenty seventeen taxes, so not much there. Let me see what.
So, we've only mowed it once.
And I don't see anything past July of last year.
Okay.
So, it looks like maybe it was just the one time.
Yeah, it could have just been the one.
Uh, so the recommendation of city planner is extend this one till the August fourteenth meeting, the consensus? I'm sorry, ma'am, did you?
No, I just, yeah, agreeing.
Yes, I did.
Yes.
Okay, so review that again on August fourteenth. I believe that's the last.
That is the last of them. So, we've got the resolution for reconsideration. So, we will get the resolution updated to reflect the property that has been removed. Fourteen ten Central Avenue is being removed. And then, two oh two Potawatomi and two oh nine Elm are being given an extension to October ninth. And then seventeen twenty-eight South Fourth, four oh seven North Tenth, and ten thirty Iron Molders are being given an extension until August fourteenth.
That is correct. Okay, need a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move.
Second.
Uh, before I close, anybody else have anything to say? Public, not, uh, motion and second, close the public hearing. Begin voting, Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry. Moving on here.
Uh, now we need a, a resolution B twenty-two oh three, and I will, I will read it, since I've got pretty good notes here to, so it goes into the record.
You, I, I was taking notes along the way, and it'll be in the, the minutes. You could just approve Resolution B twenty-two oh three as.
Discussed.
As discussed.
Okay, and just to.
With the changes discussed.
The information Ms. Hurley just said, first five properties continue to demo. Two oh two Potawatomi, two oh nine Elm, extension till October ninth. Fourteen ten Central, removed completely from the demo list. Fifteen seventeen Ninth Avenue, demo it. Fifteen twenty-nine Tenth Avenue, demo it. Seventeen twenty-eight South Fourth, extension till August fourteenth, as is four oh seven North Tenth, ten thirty Iron Molders. That's the information you have, too. Is that correct? Okay, do I have a motion to consider Resolution B twenty-two oh three?
I move we consider Resolution B twenty-two oh three, demolish or repair dangerous structures as presented.
I second it.
Motion, uh, second, uh, approve Resolution B twenty-two oh three as presented. Begin voting, Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Passes three zero. Uh, next item is consider purchase of Microsoft two thousand sixteen licenses.
Mr. Merritt, Commissioner, this is a budgeted item. It already appears in the operating budget for this year, but the spending threshold is over twenty-five thousand, so therefore, it's before you tonight. The city currently uses the Microsoft Office, twenty-ten Office Suite. Microsoft will stop support of that in November of two thousand twenty, so the decision was made in our long-term planning on our IT infrastructure to update the two thousand sixteen system. Carol Charity, our information systems manager is here to answer any questions you have. ISG Technologies, the quote that we're recommending tonight, is the company that does a lot of our IT work. They know our system very well, and it fits within the budgeted amount, so that is our recommendation. If you have any questions, Carol is here.
Is Outlook gonna improve?
Well, I think it's all, it's all cosmetic, unfortunately, but it, we can't continue to use what we have, because it is gonna go out of support in two thousand twenty, so.
I, the only thing I have a problem with is emails sometimes issues with that. I don't like Outlook. That's just my own opinion.
Questions?
One, is there any training that's necessary? I mean, I know Microsoft Office is pretty straightforward. Obviously, there'll be some changes with.
I don't think functionality-wise that we're gonna need training, but if, if anybody needs assistance with it, we will certainly offer that.
And this should be able to, we approve it, it should happen pretty quickly in terms of the getting software.
I believe we should be able to have it. What we're gonna do is get the licensing from the company, and so, we should probably have it, I would say, within a week or two, and then we'll start rolling it out. There's, you know, close to two hundred computers that we have to hit to install it, so.
Hundred and forty-seven, that's what it says.
Yeah.
Well, there's, a hundred and sixty-seven total.
Uh, I think twenty-one, a hundred and sixty-seven, yeah, I believe. Okay, any other questions?
No.
If not, I'll take a motion.
I move that we accept and approve the quote from ISG Technologies in the amount not to exceed forty-five thousand, five hundred dollars and forty-six cents for the Microsoft Office two thousand sixteen project.
For how much?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed forty-five thousand five hundred dollars and forty-six cents.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion and second to approve the Microsoft Office's licenses as presented. Begin voting with Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
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 Passes four zero.
Thank you.
Next item is pavement management program.
Our Public Works Director, Mike McDonald, will handle this item.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this is brought to you in an effort to have you approve the two thousand eighteen pavement management program. This is the budgeted item that we have for this year's budget. The project is designed by Fennis engineers to accomplish both the Granite Seal program, which is currently underway. They're about halfway through, and they'll be back in, in August. In addition, part of that project is kind of the more direct pavement part, as well as some other odds and ends of things. Primarily work on Twentieth Street. We'll be replacing the rest of the bad curving and the mill overlay portion on Twentieth Street. The work on Twentieth Street should complete the curving to Eisenhower and pavement halfway to Eisenhower from where it currently is, is State's Drive. The other substantial portion of this is parking lot and drainage improvements at the parking lot at Sixth and Cherokee across the street from Tenpenny and Gronas. We will be repairing some bad spots and improving the drainage, also creating eco-inlets like we've been doing on the last several projects in a bioswale. It will change the appearance of the parking lot. We should be able to do it in phases to only, not completely shut it down all at once, so the business will still have, patrons can use the parking lot during the project. The project was developed, designed by Fennis, worked with the input from city staff, and was put out for bid. We did receive only one bid, was for McInnany Construction, and they are in the audience here this evening. In general, we believe that the reason we received only one bid is the pavement equipment for Twentieth Street is somewhat specialized, and in fact, that's the long pole in the tent, and that is, the other contractors that may have chosen to bid that would have to subcontract with the company that has the paver or find another company that has a paver further out to bring it in. But we do have one bid that was slightly over the engineer's estimate. We do have funds budgeted for this. I think it's worth noting that the pavement portion is about one hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, but the curving is three hundred and thirty thousand. It adds up quite quickly as you, as you go on those long distances. We expect work to begin in mid to late July and be completed in ninety days, that's calendar days, and the work that is within two hundred feet of Vilas and two hundred feet of Lemon Street has to be complete by August fourth of this year to facilitate the opening of school and the increased traffic we see at that time.
Is anybody from McInnany care to speak? Have you enjoyed the meeting thus far, sir?
We get the extra money. You get minimum wage.
I do have a question for Mr. McDonald.
Please.
On the, the three lots at Sixth and Cherokee, will there be anything done to the curbs that kind of surround that parking lot that are on, what, beyond Sixth Street and Cherokee? Or is it just the parking lots? Because I, I just, I just kind of remember that those curbs aren't in that great a shape, I think. I mean, but I just was wondering if.
The curbs along the roadway, we're not planning on doing anything with those. The work will be inside the parking lot itself and the sidewalk area there. We will be doing some new curb inlets there on the intersection to tie into the, to the eco-inlets that we're putting in the parking lot.
Do you think there'll be quite a contrast between the new parking lots and the, and the curbs? I don't know. I'm not, we're not going to change anything for this project, but I just, in the future, I don't know.
We usually look at it. Yeah, if there's some that's really broke up, all the contractors there, and we can work it in, we'll go ahead and do it.
All right.
I think it's all support, no, we're not replacing most of the parking lot. The pavement, concrete paving in those parking lots is pretty solid. There's just two or three, say, broken panels that we're going to address.
And will, once the, as the project nears completion, will, will there be new stripes put in there for the parking spaces and everything?
Yes, yes. Yeah, the curb inside the, the two west parking lots will be removed so that we can do the eco inlet and the bioswale in there. So there will be parking lot, or parking blocks in that section. The far east parking lot, which is asphalt, will be milled and overlaid, and it will be re-stripped as well.
Okay.
I have, I have one question about the bids. The, so the local, the other two bidders didn't submit a bid, correct?
Correct, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Hooper or Mr. McDonald? If not, I'll take a motion.
I can go ahead and make this one. I move that we approve the low bid for the base bid submitted by McInnany Construction for the two thousand and eighteen pavement management program in the amount of one million fifty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirteen cents.
I second it.
Motion and second to approve the two thousand eighteen pavement management program as presented. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Passes four zero. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Next item is bids for the new Lawrence Road Improvement Project.
Wait a minute.
Thank you, Mr..
Number six.
Consider inspection services for two thousand eighteen pavement management program, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this is a request for assistance of part-time inspection services for the pavement management plan that was just approved. This would be with the design firm of Fennis Consulting Company. They will provide assistance to our staff to inspect the project. We have estimated that the not exceed number on this is fifty-six thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. Traditionally, try this, traditionally we have, one more time.
I thought my ears was ringing.
Traditionally, this amount is only used as necessary, and the last year we used approximately half of a similar amount because we were able to augment the inspection with our, our inspection forces somewhat. You don't know exactly what you're going to be working on when the contractor's working on it elsewhere in town, so this gives us the opportunity to move forward expeditiously on all of our projects.
Okay. Any questions?
We've been using Fennis, Fennis for several years in terms of this inspection program.
Yes. Mr. Ma, is your name Mr. McInnany?
Yeah, Phil McInnany.
Okay. You've worked with them? They work okay with you?
Absolutely. The fact of the fact is, they do it very well because we can all work at the same time and get it done and get it, get it out of everybody's way. So Fennis is doing a great job.
Okay. Any questions? Any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move approval of the engineering service contract with Fennis in the amount not to exceed fifty-six thousand five hundred and seventy dollars for the two thousand eighteen pavement management program.
I second it.
Motion and second to approve the pavement management program, two thousand eighteen pavement management.
Inspection, yeah. Sorry, I didn't say that right.
Inspection services for the pavement management program as presented. Begin voting with Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
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 Passes four zero. Next item, consider bids for new Lawrence Road Improvement Project. Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, we are proud to bring you the bids for new Lawrence Road Improvement Project. This will construct, I believe it's about fourteen hundred feet of new roadway beginning at the, just off Twentieth Street where the concrete ends and the, what used to be Blacktop began, and that will extend on around to the north to kind of the north boundary of the West Glen subdivision. This project was designed by a local firm, and we are pleased to see that we had, had four bids on the project and that Lexico from Leavenworth was the low bidder on the project. It's a hundred calendar day project. They, we expect them to be interested in beginning as quickly as possible, and we'll get the road constructed before the end of the summer or very early fall.
Will that road be closed, that portion of the road be closed during construction?
For the most part, I believe so.
Okay.
The local traffic will be in and out. It might change direction that they have to come from, and contractor will keep in contact with the two or three.
There's two or three properties there that are affected, yeah.
And there is one change. We did find a math error in, in the bids, and the recommended award amount would be three hundred and ninety-eight thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-three cents.
Can they get that?
Got it.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Hooper or Mr. McDonald? I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the low bid submitted by Lexico for the new Lawrence Road Improvement Program in the amount not to exceed three hundred and ninety-eight thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-three cents.
Motion and second to approve the bids for new Lawrence Road as presented. Begin voting.
I'll second it.
There was no second.
Oh, there was? Your ears, your, your ears ringing. I'm not hearing that. I just assumed. I'm sorry, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Begin voting with Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
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 Passes four zero. Thank you. Next item is first consideration ordinance on rezoning eleven hundred North Second Street.
City Planner will handle this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a request to rezone the Abernathy Furniture Company located eleven hundred North Second Street from planned unit development, PUD, to residential mixed-use districts, or RMX. The, the property was constructed in nineteen twenty-six as the factory for the Abernathy Furniture Company, and it was listed on the National Register of Historic Places in two thousand sixteen. In its recent history, it's housed a number of office uses that I'm sure you're mostly familiar with. Currently, there's pretty minimal office users in it right now. So the, the owner is, it's Sarin Properties. It's an arm of the Fauch Brothers Properties who developed the stove factory lofts, and they're requesting the rezoning so they can develop this into some more loft apartments. The report says it's a hundred and thirty-nine single-bedroom units. There are actually some two-bedroom units in there as well, so it's not all just a single family. The, the PUD zoning district, it was zoned that way back in the nineteen eighties, and one of the problems with the, with that zoning district is that any time you want to change anything, whether it's add a sign or any minor thing, you have to come back for a revision to that plan. That has to go through the Planning Commission and City Commission. And generally, that zoning is put in place when there's not a suitable zoning district for what the owner's looking to do. So I, I'm thinking that back in the eighties, we just didn't have, we didn't have the, you know, the, the array of zoning district options that we have now. So what the owner is looking to do is primarily develop this with the residential loft units, and then in the northwest portion of the structure, keep some commercial office uses, so really have that mixed use in the building. And the, the RMX zoning district that we have available now does suit what they're looking to do. And it gives a lot of flexibility. It allows both commercial and residential uses, but there's not a specific ratio that they have to meet. So as economic conditions change, they can kind of modify their, their users in there. So the Planning Commission did review this at their June fourth meeting and voted seven to zero to recommend approval of it. Since it is a historic registered property, the Preservation Commission has reviewed this as well and voted to recommend approval. And we did not receive any correspondence from property owners that were notified, either in favor or opposition to this. So if you have any questions, I can answer those for you.
Any questions for Ms. Hurley?
Just assuming that this particular project gets all the approvals that it needs to get, what, what, what are they looking to begin, the, you know, the new development? Do we have any idea?
It's my understanding they're looking to start it fairly quickly. The same group does have ownership of the IMAC High School, and so they, they've got a couple of projects coming down the pipeline. So they're, they also did the, the North Broadway School that I think is nearing completion, if not already complete, the Benday. So they, they've been fairly quick about getting projects up and going once they get their approvals.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Do we have a consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Next item is consent agenda.
Go ahead and make a motion to approve the claims for June ninth, two thousand and eighteen, through June twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of eight hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-three cents. Net amount for pay number thirteen effective June twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of three hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and five dollars and ninety-two cents, including police and fire pension in the amount of eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-six cents.
Second.
Motion and second to approve consent agenda as presented. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Passes four zero. Discussion among Commissioners. Commissioner Bowder.
No, I don't have anything today.
Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Griswold.
No, I don't have anything today.
I just have one thing. We're not meeting next week, July third, so I want to wish everyone a happy and safe Fourth of July. As we all know, fireworks in, use fireworks in the city of Leavenworth are not legal, but obviously, we will all hear them sometime over the next couple of weeks, or over the next week or two. And there's usually a loud, not a loud cry, but we will hear quite a bit. We need to legalize fireworks. My personal position on it is I'm either in, neither in favor or not in favor of removing the ban on fireworks. The people of Leavenworth voted that in twenty-five, thirty years ago. I would gladly put it on the ballot for the people to relook it if a valid petition was brought forward. That, take enough people and what that quantity on the petition would be, I'm guessing fifteen hundred to two thousand ballot signatures that ask that we put it on the ballot, be relooked, redo it. But as for hearing a loud cry from, I don't know how many people, I, I'm not in favor of putting it on the ballot without a valid petition since the people did vote on it one time. That's, because I know that all of us, each one of us, will hear something about that from our constituents over the next week, ten days. And it usually, it reaches an apex over the Fourth of July.
We hear both ways, though.
Yeah, yeah, and you hear both ways, yeah. And so, but once again, it's something people voted on. If they want to revote it on, people are strongly says we should remove it, get a petition together with enough signatures, which is very possible, and it will be put on the ballot, in my opinion, unless three other Commissioners decide to put it on the ballot without a petition.
I just have a question about if people or citizens do use fireworks within the city limits, are they subject to a citation?
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Okay. And that would come from the police department?
Yeah, yeah. And, like, if you exceed the speed limit, you're subject to a citation. You kind of have to, someone, police officer has to kind of see you.
Right.
And it's, yeah, yes, they are.
Do we know how many citations were given out last year?
It's in, it's always in the single digits. Our general approach is most of the time a warning of the area, and if we have to come back around, then it's usually what a citation is issued.
Any other comments, Mr. Kramer?
I just want to remind the Commission and, and more importantly, the public watching that we're having a ribbon cutting on Friday at ten o'clock, essentially, Fourteenth Street, off Eisenhower for the New Business and Technology Park. Really looking forward to that. Groundbreaking, that's a, a huge project for the city, for the county, for the whole area. So ten o'clock, everybody's welcome out at the New Business Park. It's going to be warm, but we'll try to make it quick.
Great.
Mr. Waters?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Williamson?
Nothing.
If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.